Happy Wednesday, everybody, and thank you for joining me for our doctrinal study series. This is the fifth session in our study. And this is pre-recorded, so you can watch it at your leisure and go back and go forward and do what you need to do to take notes. I have sent the outline as well as the doctrinal paper that I will be submitting to the District Committee on Ministry in prospect of possibly being passed on to the Board of Ordained Ministry for commissioning as an elder. So, this study is on the doctrine of the Holy Spirit. The third person, you might say, in the Trinity, God the Father, God the Son, God the Holy Spirit. So, we're gonna open this session with a prayer. This prayer is a very special prayer to me. It is part of the Emmaus walk experience. It is a prayer that is prayed every day, multiple times during the day. And so, it has special meaning to me. So, we're gonna open with the prayer of the Holy Spirit, and you'll see this in your notes at the very beginning. You can say it with me if you will. "Come, Holy Spirit, fill the hearts of the faithful and kindle in us the fire of your love. Send forth your Spirit, and we shall be created, and you shall renew the face of the earth. O God, who by the light of the Holy Spirit did instruct the hearts of the faithful, grant that by the same Holy Spirit we may be truly wise and ever enjoy your consolations through Jesus Christ our Lord." And they all said, "Amen." We're going to not read the doctrinal paper. I sent that to you, so I welcome you to read that. And I, once again, appreciate your feedback. I got some good feedback last week that was helpful in crafting these studies as well as the paper on the lordship of Christ. And I appreciate that feedback and invite the feedback for this paper as well. So, if you're interested, read it on your own and then feel free to email me or talk to me in person with your feedback, comments, questions, whatever. Alright, so, we're going to start with introduction. We got two scripture passages to start the study on the Holy Spirit. The first one is from 2 Corinthians 3:17. "Now the Lord is the Spirit, and where the Spirit of the Lord is, there is freedom." Now, the Lord, we talked about Jesus Christ as Lord last week. Now, the Lord is the Spirit, and where the Spirit of the Lord is, there is freedom. Now, this passage equates the Holy Spirit and Jesus Christ as Lord in terms of their identity. They're both God, they're both deity, they're both persons of the one triune God. And so, the Holy Spirit, knowing the Holy Spirit, is like knowing Jesus, is like knowing the Father. And so, the Spirit who dwells in us, the Holy Spirit, who is God with us and God in us in this present age, this time, Jesus, the bodily Jesus, is no longer present, has ascended back to the right end of the Father. But God is still ever-present, and the Holy Spirit is how we experience God in real time. Doesn't mean we don't experience the Father, because through the Spirit, we experience the love, the correction, the direction of the Father. It's not that we don't experience the Son, because through the Holy Spirit, we experience the redemptive love of Jesus Christ. The Emmanuel, God with us, is not only with us but in us through the Holy Spirit, the three-in-one. And then, 1 Corinthians 3:16, Paul writes, "Do you not know that you are God's temple and that God's Spirit dwells in you? Do you not know that you are God's temple and that God's Spirit dwells in you?" Now, that passage of scripture happens to be in the context of people who use their bodies in ways that is degrading and destructive, not respectful towards themselves and others, technically in a sexual sense that passage is dealing with. And Paul says, "Don't you know that that body that you're degrading, that body that you're abusing, that you're disrespecting, that is the temple of God, because the Holy Spirit lives in you?" So, these are two passages of scripture that I thought would be a good way to introduce our study on the Holy Spirit. Very practical verses. And then, the Holy Spirit is affirmed as God's divine presence in salvation history. Salvation history means the movement of God from the beginning of creation to the end of the ages, when creation is fully restored. In the creeds, we talk about that Christ will come again. 1 Corinthians 15 talks about the end state, the end game is a restored creation, that sin and evil have been banished, that God is reigning in the hearts of all humans, creation is back in its perfect order. And that is the trajectory we're on because of the work of God's redemption. And so, salvation history is all of that, where God began with creation and this story wraps up with final redemption. And so, that's what salvation history means. And throughout the Hebrew Bible, which is a term that I commonly use for the Old Testament, because I use that term out of respect for Jewish, the Jewish religion, the Jewish faith, because that is their Bible, that is, those are their scriptures, that is their canon. And so, it's also the Old Testament within the Christian canon. So, obviously, as a Christian, it's great to refer to it as the Old Testament, but it also is the Hebrew Bible. And the New Testament, both in the Old Testament and the New Testament, we see the Holy Spirit in salvation history, in both the baptism of Jesus and the giving of the Great Commission in the Gospels. Particularly, I'm referring to Matthew, the Gospel of Matthew. Matthew 3:16 to 17 is the baptism of Jesus by John. Matthew 28:19 is the Great Commission, where Jesus sends out his disciples to spread the gospel in word and deed. And so, in Matthew's Gospel, and it appears in the others as well, we see the baptism of Jesus and the Great Commission of Jesus. And in both of those narratives, we find the Holy Spirit placed in equality in the realm of deity. We have Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. So, in the baptism of Jesus, you have the second person of the Trinity, Jesus Christ, the Messiah, the incarnate God, being baptized. You have the Father speaking from heaven, "This is my beloved Son, and I am well pleased with him." And you have the Spirit descending like a dove and lighting upon Jesus. And so, you have Son being baptized, Father speaking affirmation, Spirit lighting upon the person of Jesus affirming him. And so, you have the triune God represented in that passage. And then, in Matthew 28:19, the Great Commission, the authority that Jesus sends the disciples out to do the work that will become the work of the church. The authority is, he said, "In the name of," or "in the authority of," "the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit." And in the language, the Greek language there, these three entities are on equal terms in that narrative. So, Jesus says, "I am sending you, not just by my authority as the Son, but by the Father's, mine, and the Spirit's authority. I'm sending you out with this Trinitarian authority." So, the Spirit is equated there with Jesus and the Father in the realm of authority. Now, in the Book of Acts, when Ananias and Sephira are rebuked after they had promised to sell a property and bring the proceeds from the property to the apostles for the work of ministry. Now, the context of that, in that same passage, it talks about Barnabas, who was really kind of the predecessor of Paul and was the one that brought Paul, who had been Saul of Tarsus, a persecutor of the church, into the church and said, "This man is authentic, he is repented, he is one of us now." And Barnabas's affirmation of Paul gave him the credibility that then, upon that, in his own works and teachings, he built a foundation, or God built a foundation, that elevated Paul to kind of the leader of the church, or a leader of the church at that time. But Barnabas, more behind-the-scenes kind of guy, he was known for selling his properties and bringing the money to the apostles and saying, "Use this for the expanse of the gospel, for the expanse of the reign of God on earth through the church." And then, so it says in that same passage, "In that day, there were no needs in the community, because they were all being met by the church, because people were giving sacrificially and those proceeds were being used in a way that changed the community for good. There weren't, there were no poverty, there was no outstanding need in the community." So, in the context of that, Ananias and Sephira in the church, they promised to sell a property and bring the money. Well, they ended up withholding a portion of that money that they got from the sale. They decided, "Maybe we won't give all of it," even though that's what they had promised. And so, Peter, in this passage, is rebuking them. And he says something very unique here in Acts 5, verses 3 through 4. He says, "Ananias, why has Satan filled your heart to lie to the Holy Spirit and to keep back part of the proceeds of the land? And then, he goes on to say, "You have not lied to men or humans, you have lied to God." And this is one of those passages that we refer to in honoring Trinitarian theology. If lying to the Holy Spirit is the same as lying to God, then the Holy Spirit is God, it's one of those logic things. Alright, now, we are going to look at the Nicene Creed, the part about the Holy Spirit. The Nicene Creed, 3:25 AD or CE is when the Capodocian brothers and other influencers of the church in those first few centuries, or they didn't live a few centuries, but you know what I'm saying, the culmination of teachings of the church come to a codification in the creeds. And the Nicene Creed at 3:25, and then, I think in 3:81, it was expanded a little more to codify the language of the Holy Spirit. But this is what it says, "We believe in the Holy Spirit, the Lord, the giver of life, who proceeds from the Father and the Son." That's based on what Jesus said in John, chapters 14 through 16. "I'm not leaving you as orphans. When I return to the Father, I will pray to the Father, who will send you another comforter, another of, on equal terms, the Greek word, is for another of the same kind. I will pray to the Father, he will send you another comforter of the same kind, the divine paraclete, to walk through this journey with you, to empower you, to convict you, to convince you of truth, all those things." John, chapters 14 through 16. And so, the Nicene Creed, from the point of view of Western Christianity, that's the Roman Catholic Church and Protestants, says, "Who proceeds, the Holy Spirit who proceeds from the Father and the Son." The Eastern Church, the Eastern Orthodox Church, they do not accept that wording of the Nicene Creed, but rather, "Who proceeds from the Father." They see the Spirit proceeding from the Father. I'm not speaking for them, but I would guess that it's because Jesus' term was, "I will pray the Father send the Holy Spirit." I really don't think it's something to make a big deal out of. However, Eastern Christianity thinks it is, so that's okay. But the Spirit comes to us from the Father and Son, where the Son prays to the Father, the Father sends the Holy Spirit, "who with the Father," this is the creed, "who with the Father and the Son is worshiped and glorified, who has spoken through the prophets." So, here we have the Nicene Creed placing the Holy Spirit on the same level of authority, of deity, as the Father and the Son. So, while the doctrinal paper that you may read, that I sent you, deals mostly, almost entirely, with the ministration of God's grace in the life of the believer, the work of the Holy Spirit in our experience as Christians, even before we believe. And in the community of faith, that is, the corporate body of Christ, the church. So, that's where my paper focuses on the work of the Holy Spirit. But we will begin in this study with a brief overview of the work of the Holy Spirit in the Old Testament or the Hebrew Bible, including the presence and participation of the Holy Spirit in creation, the creation narratives, and the anointing and empowering of leadership in the redemptive movement of God with the covenant people of Israel. In other words, the Holy Spirit was at work anointing, separating and identifying human beings as prophets, Isaiah, Jeremiah, Elijah, you know, the minor prophets, Haggai, Malachi, Zephaniah, Zacharias, so forth, Daniel, one of the other major prophets. The Holy Spirit is the one that identified them, separated them, made it obvious that they had a calling from God, and empowered them. Now, that's prophets. Also, the Holy Spirit identified kings, David, Solomon, even Saul was anointed as a king. Not the first choice of God, obviously. There are scriptures that seem to indicate was not the choice of God, but rather, the choice of humans. But then, there's also scripture that states that God told Samuel, "Go ahead, I'm gonna use this, it's alright." Anoint. And so, Samuel, the prophet, anointed the king with oil, pouring the oil over the head. Did the same with the priests and so forth, but it's the Holy Spirit. The oil represents, just like baptismal waters represent the anointing, the spiritual anointing of the Holy Spirit, separating this person, identifying them, and empowering them. Prophets, priests, and kings, all were anointed by the Holy Spirit, the ones that were truly of God. Now, so, we're gonna look at that and the Holy Spirit's work there. I wanna watch my time here, 'cause I'm about halfway through with the time that I wanna spend on this. So, the Holy Spirit, first of all, let's look at the Holy Spirit in creation. Genesis 1, chapter 1 and verse 2 says, "The Spirit of God was hovering over the face of the waters." The Old Testament, you're not gonna see the term "Holy Spirit," you're gonna see the Spirit of the Lord, the Spirit of God. Same, same, as New Testament language, the Holy Spirit. And so, it's the Holy Spirit, the Spirit of God, was hovering over the waters of creation. Many theologians, scholars, say that it was the Holy Spirit that energized, that produced the energy for the creation. The Hebrew word ruach means breath, wind, or spirit, a dynamic, life-giving source. This is the word used for the Spirit of God here, the ruach of God, of Yahweh. So, "The Spirit hovers like a bird over chaos, preparing to bring order and life." This evokes Deuteronomy 32:11, where God is likened to an eagle hovering over its young. So, you see the Holy Spirit brooding like a mother over its babies, whether it's a bird or a human or whatever. Jesus refers to God as like a hen that is gathering her chicks under her wings. And so, you see the Holy Spirit in that light in creation. The Nicene Creed echoes this when it says, "The Lord, the giver of life," affirming the Spirit's creative role. Job 33:4 says, "The Spirit of God has made me, and the breath of the Almighty gives me life." This verse links the Spirit directly to human creation and vitality. It affirms the Spirit is not only present at the beginning, but continues to sustain life. Psalm 104:30, "When you send forth your Spirit, they are created, and you renew the face of the earth." The Spirit's work is ongoing, renewing creation, not just initiating it. This verse is often quoted in liturgical prayers, including the Emmaus prayer that we started off this session with. Now, the Holy Spirit is also involved, not just in creation in the Hebrew Bible, but also in the anointing and empowering of leaders, as we already mentioned. Judges 6:34, "Then the Spirit of the Lord came upon Gideon." The Spirit clothes Gideon with courage and leadership to deliver Israel. The Hebrew implies a sudden empowerment, a divine enablement for a specific mission. You'll see the same thing throughout Judges, you see it with Samson. "And the Spirit came upon, the Spirit of the Lord came upon Samson, and he carried the gates of a city, two miles up a hill. The Spirit of the Lord came upon Samson, and he slew a thousand Philistines with the jawbone of a donkey." You see these stories throughout Judges, where the Spirit of the Lord comes upon the leader, that regional leader that we refer to as Judges, and they were able to do something that humans cannot do. 1 Samuel 10:6 and verse 10 says, "The Spirit of the Lord will come upon you, and you will be changed into a different person." The Holy Spirit empowers us to be that which we cannot be without the Spirit. Saul is transformed, in that passage, by the Spirit to lead Israel as its first king. Obviously, if Saul was not God's first choice as the king of Israel, that was more the people's desire. It's gonna take the empowerment, the anointing of the Holy Spirit to make Saul into the person that can even do this job. Well, it would be true, also of David and of Solomon, who were God's choices, but especially in the sense that this isn't who I really picked, but we're going to anoint this guy and make him able to do the job. 1 Samuel 16:13, "Then Samuel took the horn of oil and anointed him, and the Spirit of the Lord came powerfully upon David." Here, King David. David's anointing is both symbolic and spiritual. The Spirit rushes upon him, this moment foreshadows the messianic expectations of anointed one that is prophesied in Isaiah, to sit upon the throne of David and rule in an ageless way. And that's a prophetic word from Isaiah about Jesus. So, "The Spirit of the Lord," Isaiah 61:1, "is upon me, because the Lord has anointed me." Isaiah, in this passage, which is later quoted by Jesus in Luke, chapter 4, ties the Spirit to justice, healing, and proclamation. So, "The Spirit of the Lord was upon Isaiah, the Spirit of the Lord was upon Jesus, the man, Jesus Christ, who was the incarnation of God." Jesus divested himself of all of the benefits of being the Spirit God and entered into the frailty of humanity. And so, the Holy Spirit, God, anointed him and empowered him to do the things that he did as a human being on the earth. You see this constant cycle, the Son empowered by the Holy Spirit, constantly referring to the Father, and the three working together as one. The Holy Spirit is that divine energy brooding over the creation, causing things to happen that cannot happen without God. The Holy Spirit, also, and divine grace are coupled in salvation history. So, the grace of God in salvation is directly tied to the work of the Holy Spirit. From prevenient grace, which is the grace of God at work in us before we ever cooperate, believe, or open our hearts to God, the Holy Spirit's already working in our lives. I believe from the moment of conception, or from the moment of when life becomes viable, whenever we become human lives, that is where the Holy Spirit is at work in our lives, drawing us, wooing us, bringing us towards the salvific work of God through Jesus Christ for our justification. And then, after, by faith in Jesus Christ, a gift that comes through the Holy Spirit, the ability to believe, the ability to have faith and repent. From that moment, then, the Spirit is working in our lives in sanctifying grace, conforming us to the image of Jesus Christ. So, the Spirit initiates the work of salvation. We don't initiate it. We don't just wake up one day and say, "I think it would be a good idea to repent on my sins" and to believe that Jesus Christ is God in human flesh, that came, who lived a perfect life, who did these miracles, taught these great things, lived an example that no other human could live, died, taking on the poison of sin and evil, and dying in our place, and then ushering in the salvific, healing, redemptive work that saved my soul. We don't wake up one day saying, "I think I'll do that." It's the Holy Spirit that initiates all of that. John 16:8, "He will convict the world of sin, righteousness, and judgment." The Spirit initiates that in our hearts, convinces us that we're sinful, we're undone, we're not capable, and we need salvation. Titus 3:4 and 5, "He saved us by the washing of rebirth and renewal by the Holy Spirit." So, in the moment we accept the faith that the Spirit empowers in us and we receive the gift of salvation, it's the Holy Spirit that regenerates us and brings about the new birth, changing who we are in Christ. The Spirit awakens the conscience before faith is formed. This prevenient grace is imitative, not coercive. It draws us toward Christ even before we know that we have a need. The Spirit regenerates, that's justifying grace. Romans 5:5, "God's love has been poured into our hearts through the Holy Spirit." 2 Corinthians 5:17, "If anyone is in Christ, there is a new creation. Through the Holy Spirit, we are justified or made right with God through faith and made new, changed." The Spirit imparts spiritual vitality and incorporates us into the body of Christ. Now, we've talked about baptism by water and spirit. That is the signifying act by which we enter into the covenant of God's salvific grace, the work of God in our salvation. And both water and spirit are present in that. And we won't get into the details and the differences between infant baptism and adult baptism and all that, 'cause that's for a different study. But John 3:5 says, "No one can enter the kingdom of God unless they are born of water and the Spirit." But John three-five says, no one can enter the kingdom of God unless they are born of water and the Spirit. The Spirit has to regenerate us. Matthew three-eleven, he will baptize you with the Holy Spirit and fire, which is cleansing or purging. Ezekiel twenty-six, twenty-five through twenty-seven, I will sprinkle clean water on you. I will put my spirit within you. So there's a connection between baptism with water and baptism of the Spirit. Those two things uh go together. Now, doctrine and symbolism, water symbolizes cleansing and public identification with Christ. Spirit signifies inward renewal and divine empowerment. Together, they reflect the sacramental and spiritual dimensions of rebirth. So there is a connection there between water and spirit. Now, the Nicene Creed affirms one baptism for the forgiveness of sins. And the Great Commission, Matthew twenty-eight nineteen commands baptism in the name of the Father or by the authority of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. But then not only does the Spirit regenerate us and we experience a new birth, but then the Spirit continues to sanctify us or transform us by grace. Galatians five twenty-two through twenty-five talks about the fruit of the Spirit, the things that grow in our lives, become part of who we are by the work of the Spirit in our lives. Love, peace, joy, patience, kindness, goodness, self-control. These are things that grow in our lives because of the sanctifying work of the Holy Spirit in our hearts, changing our hearts and minds to be like Christ. Romans eight sixteen says, the Spirit testifies with our spirit that we are God's children. Sanctification is the Spirit's ongoing work, conforming us to Christ's image and empowering us for holy living and social holiness, living out our uh the work of the Spirit in our lives to the advantage of community and to the communal way that we live, touching other people's lives. Philippians two verses twelve to thirteen says, therefore, I love this verse, it's directly related to the sanctifying grace of God through the Holy Spirit. Therefore, my beloved, just as you have always obeyed me, not only in my presence, but much more now in my absence, work out your own salvation with fear and trembling. For it is God who is at work in you, enabling you both to will or to want to and to work or to do his good pleasure. In other words, this is an invitation to us to cooperate with God's grace, the work of the Holy Spirit in our lives. As the Spirit makes us want to do right, do good, also empowers us to do right, to do good, we are to work out our own salvation. And that word was used for cultivating a field by a farmer. It was used for kneading dough. Uh in culinary terms, it's working out something that is already there. Bring out the work of the Holy Spirit in your attitudes, in your words, in your behaviors. Verse twelve calls believers to active obedience, work out your own salvation, not as a means of earning grace. You can't earn grace, but as a response to grace that is at work in your life through the Holy Spirit. Then verse thirteen reveals the mystery. It is God is the one that is working within us, shaping both our desires and our actions in alignment with God's purposes for our lives. It's a beautiful echo of prevenient and sanctifying grace. God stirring the heart even before we're cooperating, God is stirring the heart, the Holy Spirit's working and empowering the hands to do the work. This is a very capsulated view of the Holy Spirit. I hope it's beneficial to you. Again, I invite your comments on the study, your questions, your observations. You can do that by email. You can talk to me in person. You can call, whatever. I want uh you to be part of this. Uh it's not ideal pre-recording. Uh but since we decided not, or I decided it was better not to try to do this in person during Project Transformation, uh and the technology didn't seem to work out well for me for live streaming. Um we're doing this by pre-recording, so I do still want your participation uh in any way that you would like to offer that. And we're gonna close with a liturgy uh baptized and empowered by the Spirit. You'll see it on the last page of your outline. And I'll do the leader part uh because it would be awkward if I don't do the all parts. Since you're not here with me, I'll do that part too, but I invite you to join me in the parts labeled all. So here we go. Brothers and sisters, we have been washed in water and born of the Spirit. We belong to the living body of Christ. Now, all of us, we are baptized in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. We have died with Christ and risen with him in newness of life. The Spirit of God has been poured into our hearts. It is God who works in us to will and to act according to God's good pleasure. Now, all of us, create in us clean hearts, O God, renew us by your Holy Spirit, kindle in us the fire of your love. Come, Holy Spirit, Lord and giver of life, send us forth as witnesses of Christ's grace and truth. May we walk in the Spirit, bear the fruit of love, joy, peace, and justice, and work out our salvation with holy trembling and joyful trust. And we all say, amen. Thank you so much for joining me in this study on the Holy Spirit. Uh look forward to hearing from you. God bless you. Have a wonderful Wednesday and a wonderful rest of your week. Hope to see you in the house of the Lord on Sunday for worship. God bless. Bye-bye.